That's what I was looking for. We have the agenda page. Can I have some photographs?
I call the meeting to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission. Today is October 11th, Thursday, 7:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Minier.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
The records show Commissioner Reinhardt is absent.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda? We have only one item tonight.
I move that we adopt the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Setting the motion.
Okay. The motion is moved. Any other discussion before we?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, so the motion is accepted. Next is approval of the draft action minutes of August 9, 2012. All of you have the chance to review this and any changes you want to make.
I don't know. I'm fine with it.
I have no changes.
Okay.
Motion that we move the minutes.
We have the motion and we have the second. Motion moves. I mean, the item is moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Now it's time for the oral communication. Anyone in the audience want to speak before the commission when the matters that are not on the agenda? I don't see anyone, so we move on to the next item, which is written communication. And we got this, the 11th Annual Housing Leadership Day. All of you have that copy of that. It seems like a pretty good session. There is a registration fee there, right? $50?
I believe there is, yes.
Yeah. So if any one of us would like to go, the city has funds to?
There's a, yeah, we have a nominal training budget that would allow for.
Okay, so how you go about doing that? Anyone who wants to go, contact you or?
Just contact Ken.
Okay.
And let us know. I'll be attending as well, so.
Okay. As Commissioner Doe expressed the desire to see him, I'd like to go, so. Okay. Next is for, we have the chief guest here tonight. The so-called retired city attorney, Harold, he's taken the lead from Tim Toon. I guess he's going to be a regular figure, I think, during the EIR process. He's going to tell us about the role of the planning commission in the BRLA's EIR process. And we are all very anxious to hear what you have to say, because some of us are still trying to figure out the whole EIR and how the whole process works and all that. So your presentation will be really helpful and is really appreciated. So go on.
I hope so. Let me just, there is a memorandum in your packet. Let me just.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
There's a memorandum in your packet. Can you hear me better now?
A little, a little. Not much.
That mic is not working, I guess, or?
Ah, it's working, not so well.
How's that? Oh, okay. I guess we've solved the problem.
Good, thanks.
As I was saying, there's a memorandum in your packet that has a very brief description of the role of the planning commission. I should mention that the city has retained a special counsel to assist in reviewing the EIR from a legal perspective. And this memorandum was written kind of in collaboration with her as well. It's Margaret Su-Hagyi, who is kind of a specialist in sequel law. So aside from the fact that the processing of this thing certainly would exceed my tenure, perhaps my lifetime, but in any case, I think the most difficult message I need to give you this evening is that in this process, the commissioners are going to be asked to refrain from a very tempting inclination to make comments. There will be an opportunity to do that, but as indicated in the memorandum, the role of the commission is basically to receive input. And if I could go back and retrace the overall process for an EIR, once the draft EIR is released, and that is going to be happening fairly soon, we're still working on that and probably, you know, within sometime maybe in November or thereabouts, there will be a draft EIR and then that will be distributed to other agencies as well as members of the public. Following that, there will be an opportunity for public comment. And that would include comments from other agencies that may have some involvement in the project, for example, Caltrans with the road utilities, as well as members of the Brisbane community. Oddly enough, while public hearings are always conducted by most cities in connection with EIRs, SEQUO does not really require the conduct of a public hearing. It does require an opportunity for public comment, but that's different from an actual public hearing as you're accustomed to that process being conducted by the planning commission. Nevertheless, during that comment period, the role of the commission at that point will essentially be to act as the vehicle through which the public will be able to make its comments. So essentially, you're in a listening mode at that point. There will be an opportunity later on for the commissioners as a commission to make comments. And if there's anything in the EIR that you feel needs comment or is inadequate or needs amplification, you will have an opportunity to do that. But during this public comment period, the main function is to receive comments from members of the public. This will be mostly through oral testimony and also written communications would be delivered to the city or directly to the commission. Now, the memorandum does make the point that commissioners as individuals can make comments. But it would be very important, if you wanted to do that, to make it clear that you're speaking as an individual and not in your official capacity as a planning commissioner. The reason for this, for lack of a better word, I'll use, I'll say muzzling of commissioners, is that there will come a time when you do have to actually take action on the EIR in terms of a recommendation to the city council. And if the commissioners became involved in the comment period too early, the concern is that that may affect the nature of the public comments. It is not a time for a debate between members of the public and members of the commission. And it also may somehow affect the ability of the commissioners to then make it clear to the public that you're taking an impartial, you've made an impartial analysis of the draft EIR, the final EIR. By making comments early in the process, normally the procedure would be for the commissioners and the council for that matter to receive all the comment, take it into consideration, and then provide your own reaction to it. So what we're asking the commissioners to do is essentially to listen, but refrain from participating directly in the process of receiving the public comments. What will happen after that is that the EIR consultant will receive all those comments and is required under SEQUO to prepare a response to comments. And then the draft EIR, the comments, and the responses are the three pieces that make up the final EIR. When that document comes to you, and that would be along with the other aspects of the project, that is the point formally, when the commission makes its own determination on the EIR, you would have an opportunity to indicate any areas that you think are inadequate, or for that matter, that adequately cover the subject. You also would have opportunities at that point to talk about the project itself, so.
I have a question. That's still in the draft EIR or is that the final EIR?
That would be the final EIR.
So that is when we would make our?
Pretty much, yes, yes. I mean, we can't say that it would be, you're prohibited from offering comments on the draft, you know, as individuals. I guess our only concern of doing that is that we wouldn't want it to appear that the judgment of the commission is in any way preordained or that you haven't taken into account all the public comments before you've made your own decision. So if you were going to make comments, it should be as individuals. I would even go further and say the best way to do that would be to put it in writing. If you felt really compelled, if there's something there that you felt was just a glaring omission or problem with the draft EIR, if you put it in writing, that written comment will go to the consultant and the consultant would be required to respond. But as pointed out in the memorandum, that writing has to be from you as an individual and not as a commissioner. So refrain from using city letterhead. If you're going to be sending it by email, send it through a personal email if you have one other than the city's networking system. And so it's clear that you're commenting as an individual and you're not really representing the commission as a whole. But when the final EIR is put together, then that comes to you for an actual review, consideration, and recommendation to the city council. You'll also be making a recommendation on the entire project, so I think those will be coming to you at the same time. The council cannot take action on the project until it first certifies the EIR. And that certification will take into account all of the comments by commissioners or by the commission as a commission. You could also, if you're so inclined, appear before the city council and make comments to the council after the commission has concluded its review of the EIR. But you folks are really the first ones to take a look at this thing, and you're also the first ones to comment on it. And we're saying the same thing to the city council, is that don't, we wouldn't want council members to show up here giving you input because they are the ones with the final decision-making responsibility to certify the EIR. I'm sorry, yes?
How much of a consensus does the commission need to have when it makes the recommendation to the city council?
I think like any other commission action, if it's a majority vote. And I think those who disagree, as you could on any application that goes to the council, you have a right to submit with the report of the commission recommendation, kind of a minority report, if you disagree with any part of that. And aside from the EIR, I would say that that's an ability you have in any matter that ends up going to the city council, whether it's a recommendation on a zoning ordinance or whether it's an appeal from an administrative action taken by the planning commission. But especially with the EIR, this is, as you probably have already been told, is going to be a very long and very complicated document, which is going to match a very large and complicated project. So it's quite possible you may have disagreements with certain components of it. It would be hard to make a judgment on the whole thing because it's going to be divided up into so many pieces. But if there's any aspect of it you feel on your recommendation to the council that you disagree with the commission, then, you know, you certainly can make your views known to the city council, so.
The question I have is, you mentioned that the commission will not have the opportunity to comment until the final EIR. The concern I have is that when it goes to the final EIR, that's already a final stage per se. Wouldn't it be possible to have the comments at the end of the draft review and those comments be taken into account when you're preparing the final EIR?
Well, I guess I would defer to John to some degree. There's nothing in SEQUO, by the way, that mandates one process or another. I think these are just policy or practice recommendations that, you know, attorneys or SEQUO practitioners would follow. Legally, I suppose you could, but I think, I'm not sure there'd be too much of a difference because when you get the response back, you can, you know, make comments on that and that may prompt the matter going back to the consultant for further work. So the fact that the consultant has already, you know, responded to the comments, it is not a completed document. The EIR is not finished until it's certified by the city council. And the city council is required to take into account all of the comments and suggestions and recommendations from the planning commission. So I think even if you're waiting until the response to comments comes back, some of the concerns you might have had might already be addressed in that response, but that wouldn't prevent you from then saying to the consultant, "Well, even with your response, I think there's an inadequacy on this point or that response, and we need further information."
But my concern was that, as you mentioned, that we will not be able to tell our concerns that may not be part of the concerns that submitted by the citizens or other groups. See if I myself have a separate concern.
Well, that was why I was saying probably the best way to document that would be to put it in writing and deliver it.
The problem with that is that, again, it might show, you know, the one way we're trying to prevent the planning commissioner to get involved in the process and now we're going as an independent, you know, the?
That's exactly why we?
The thing is that if anybody's looking at it, is that they're going to say this is from the planning commissioner.
Well, that's exactly why we prefer that you refrain from doing that.
So that's why what I was wondering is, is there any possible way that you can comment before the final draft comes up? Because then, you know, it's just like a staging, anything. Before you do the pre-construction, there should be a pre-construction meeting and at the end, everybody's comment should be taken into account before you finally start the construction. So same process here, the final EIR, before we even go to that point, I think the planning commission should have the say in some of the items and say, "Okay, this is the we'd like to see." And when the final draft comes in, then it will be a lot easier in terms of getting that through rather than wait until the last minute to hear the concerns from the planning commission.
If I could, I think you raise a good point. I think part of the problem is sort of words and what a final EIR is. It's not, as Hal indicated, it's not, the final EIR is composed of the draft EIR, the responses to comments, the comments, and any changes to the document that result, have resulted from these comments and the response process. So all four of those components are fair game for you as a commission when you are considering the final EIR. You can consider the original draft, you can consider the comments, you consider the responses to the comments. So it's not, it's not to the extent that, "Well, this is the final document, now you need to kind of endorse it or rubber stamp it and push it through."
Yeah, but the problem is that?
All of those are up for the commission's complete, open purview.
Yeah, but in the entire process, according to the city attorney, says that planning commission not supposed to give their own opinion. When are we supposed to give the opinion? At the time of the final EIR? That may not, may be too late because I may have the opinion that's not expressed at all by any of the comments we received. So I need to have the opportunity at some point before it goes to the final EIR stage.
Well, I think the question is, when you're talking about your individual opinion?
Not individual, as a planning commissioner, yeah.
Even though what you're going to need for that position to carry forward is two other votes, right?
Yeah, yeah, but the thing is?
If you have a majority opinion, then the planning commission recommendation to the council is that the EIR needs to be revised to address, fill in the blank, as an issue?
Well, again, I think that is pretty late in the game. I think the planning commission should be involved right at the, after we receive the draft EIR comments, at that point, the planning commission should review that and submit their comments on the whatever was received at the end of the draft EIR rather than waiting until the final EIR comes in. That's my opinion, but I don't know whether legally it's possible or not, but that's what I am used to see in any process, that before it goes to the final, it should have, all the parties should have the opportunity to put their two cents' worth.
I guess all I'd have to say is that the construction, pre-construction conference may not be a good analogy because the whole?
I was just meaning?
No, I know, but the process makes sense in that context because the whole idea of the pre-construction conference is to make sure everybody understands what the project is, everybody is in agreement on the drawings and what's necessary to be done, and you work out the technicalities of the schedule and resolve any issues. The difference here is that if you did it before the response to comments, you don't have working drawings yet. Taking your analogy, it's the same kind of thing. Until you get the document back, it's not, you don't have the responses to the comments and it's not a final EIR. And the word "final" is probably deceptive here because it's not final. I think what we're trying to say is that by making your comments and taking action as a commission at that stage of the process, it actually is not too late because unlike a pre-construction conference where the drawings are finalized, here the EIR is not yet finalized and the commission can say, "Well, we think X, Y, and Z needs to be changed or amplified or further study or whatever." And that kind of keeps the review process going at the commission level. And I think the consultant has then a responsibility of responding to those comments by the commission as a commission. So it's kind of like you are making comments early but at a later point than the public in general.
Yeah. My concern was that?
May I?
Let me finish first. My real concern was that we don't want to be overwhelmed with all the responses and comments and all that and we forget our own concerns. And I wanted to have the opportunity upfront to make sure that the EIR is going in the right direction. There might be some basic problems. I'm not saying that there will be, but we want to have that opportunity. So I apologize, Commissioner Cunningham. Your turn now.
Well, thanks. Now you have a tea here. We have a very long document that is going to be before us, 800 pages, I believe, and it's going to be broken up into pieces that we're going to chunk off in pieces, correct?
Yes.
Right. So what you're asking here, if I understand this correctly, is that we get chunk A of the draft EIR in front of us?
Maybe just clarify, you're going to get the entire document?
But we're going to, we're going to look at it in pieces, correct?
That's real, when you get to the final, when you get to the point of having your hearings on it, that's going to be up to you how you want to organize that.
Okay, so if I can just say, I think we are going not to look at 800 pages in each evening and take comments from the public on all 800 pages because we'll be all over the map.
Are we talking about the drafts, the EIR stage?
Yes, yes.
The final EIR stage?
No, the draft EIR, right? So there's 800 pages of the draft EIR. When that's coming to us from the public? Is the public going to be able to come in and go all over 800 pages or are we going to say, "This evening's discussion is going to be on pages 1 to 200"?
Yeah, the council will ultimately establish kind of a more formal schedule, but we anticipate it would be probably one night of an overview of the entire document where maybe you don't take any testimony at all.
Right.
Or however many nights it takes for them to present the information.
Right.
And then you would take public comment on discrete parts of the document.
Let's, for just, for example's sake, let's say 1 to 200 pages. So 1 to 200 pages, public comment is coming in. So I understand that we should refrain from commenting on that night. I understand that's a really good place to be for all the right reasons. When do we get to comment on that chunk? Is it at the end or somewhere through that?
Well, I think what we're talking about is the, at the end of this comment period and you go through your five sessions or 10 sessions or however many sessions it takes to get through the draft?
Right.
There'll be a compilation of all the comments. And at that point, then the consultant has the obligation to respond in writing to those comments.
And so?
That will be a whole separate document that's published, that's that entire compilation. And as Hal indicated, your obligation, your responsibility to the council is to look at the whole of that body of information and testimony and evidence and make a recommendation to the council on the whole of the body. If you choose, again, internally, when you're doing that, it's going to be up to you how you want to, I assume you probably want to do the same kind of, "Tonight, we're going to focus on chapter one," and then the next night we'll focus on chapter two, et cetera, et cetera. It's the same sort of process, but it's after all this body of information is developed.
Sure. So further to that comment, my question is, we live here, we have personal feelings about a lot of different things. So relative to us not asking questions or presenting information as a planning commissioner but as residents of the community, how can we best do that when we chunk it up to bring our personal comments in? Because we're all going to have, we're all very, very different-thinking people on this little commission here. We should be able to add our personal comments as residents. I'm a resident before I'm a commissioner. I want to be able to comment on how I feel about pages 1 through 200 as well. So let's think about how's the way for us to do that, please?
The most, again, as I think if you remember from the SEQUO training, the instructor was very strong and encouraging written comments. And that's basically what we would recommend any individual to do. If you sit through a meeting when the public's discussing pages 1 through 200 and it gets your mind thinking, "Well, gee, that raises this question or that question," it's probably a really good idea to kind of keep running, you in your own mind, you compile that into a written form.
And then we send it to you?
And then, or you compile it, you wait till you have all those and you compile them into a single letter at the end of the whole process before the comment period closes. That's what I'd encourage. I mean, you could write?
And then we do that as an individual, right? That's what I thought.
That's a comment, though, it was kind of interesting that you said, "Well, what if we think it's going in the wrong direction?" Well, that's exactly the concern we have, is that you've already made a judgment that it's going in the wrong direction and so the commission then would take action to redirect it, which is not what we really want to happen. So I think if you think it's going in the wrong direction, from your personal point of view, the best approach is write down how you think it's being done and then submit that later. The other thing, though, I wanted to mention is that once the public comment period is over, it's over. And the commission can take as much time as you want deliberating on the document when it comes back to you for your actual consideration and recommendation. You know, there's a culture here that whenever there's a meeting, anyone in the audience can speak as often as they want and as long as they want. And that's fine if it's a public hearing, but this is not a public hearing. The public will have its opportunity to make as many comments as it wants and it will take as many meetings as it requires. But once it comes back to you, that's the point for commission deliberation and for you to exchange views among yourselves. There'll be people sitting in the audience and their hands will go up, "Well, I disagree with what you want to say and I want to make a comment," but the comment period is over. It is not a public hearing. And so I think the ground rule would need to be established at the start of those meetings and it probably is going to take more than one if we go through 200 pages at a time for you folks to talk among yourselves about how you think the EIR, you know, how adequate it is and any comments you may have, because that's your chance finally to make some comments on the EIR, but not for the public to interrupt, for the public to have an opportunity to give more testimony. Their opportunity has been extended. It's been probably longer than the law requires. I'm sure that will be? I'm sure that will be the case. And once that period is closed, then it's your turn, and you really need to keep the public aware of the fact that the commission should be given its own opportunity to deliberate without interruption from the public.
I have a question. If there seems to be an omission that was not covered in the EIR that is of concern, we as a council, I mean, as a commission, would, at the very end, after the public comment and after they've responded, then we would say that we feel there's an omission that has not been studied? Okay, thanks. Then what?
Then the consultant will have to respond to your comments as well.
But the omission was not discussed by the general public, you know, we've never got the comments from the part that was not part of-
But these are your judgments. In other words, if you feel there's an omission, that's the consultant's responsibility. That's why I come back to the point, the point of public input at that stage is over. And if you feel that there's an omission, that's a perfectly legitimate comment on the EIR, and the consultant would need to respond to that. That does not reopen a public comment period. There could be some change in the project along the way. There could be some substantial modification of the EIR to the point where, you know, it may need to be recirculated, and we may need to reopen the public comment period if the project changes. But assuming it's the same project, and you think that there's some glaring omission in the EIR, by all means, you know, raise that point, and I think the consultant would need to deal with it, and ultimately the council would need to be satisfied.
So at that point, so would it be preferable for the commissioners to write early on privately that we see an omission, or it doesn't matter?
Well, again, it's really sort of up to your individual judgment. I think the city attorney's giving you some of the concern about-
Right.
-free judgment, but I guess if it is just, if it, there's maybe a fine line, but you think there's just a glaring omission, that's not value, you're not saying, "Well, this analysis did X, Y, or Z," it's just missing something that you think should be in there. To me, that's probably the kind of thing that, as an individual, you want to bring up sooner than later.
Okay, thanks.
I agree, yeah.
Right.
Okay, one comment I will make about the process that you described, John. It would be better to have the consultant just focus on the item that we, the pages that we're going to discuss, rather than come in the beginning, cover all 800 pages, and then we're going chapter by chapter. We have probably forgotten what he has said before. So my suggestion will be that if we divide it up into several, say, eight sessions with four chapters each, those four chapters should be first discussed by the consultant, and then we open up the public hearing.
Actually, I disagree. I think that we are presented with an EIR, and I think it's important that we present it to the public and the city as the whole EIR, and then we can go through and have different sections discussed. But I think, you know, that it should be-
The whole EIR at one time-
...having an overview.
Overview at the beginning. It's the overview at the beginning.
That's what I'm saying, is the overview.
But the thing is, each time when you have a discussion thing, I think it's better to have the consultant explain those chapters, what's covered.
Okay, so, for example, traffic, you know, then we would have a section on traffic, and, you know, I agree.
Because the thing is, if you want to give the overview for all 800 pages in one session, and then you go into the traffic, you know, I think it's better to have the, if you are discussing traffic and air pollution and all that, at that particular session, if the consultant gives the overview of those four or five items that we're going to discuss, will be more helpful, rather than have a general overview at the beginning when you cannot cover everything.
I still disagree. I think we need an overview of the whole item.
We need the overview, but we also need that.
And then, we have sections where we would have an overview of the different sections. Are we speaking the same language?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, good.
I think your bigger problem is going to be to keep the public focused.
Right.
If you're doing sessions at a time, you're going to have people coming up with their whole long shopping list of comments on the EIR, and they're going to be going through the whole document. Aside from the fact it's going to prolong the meeting and have you jumping all over the place, I think it's going to be important to tell speakers, "We're only dealing with traffic," or "We're only dealing with, you know, this subject or that," and if you have comments on other areas of the EIR, then there will be an opportunity to make those comments, and, you know, they need to limit their comments to the subject that's under review at the time.
Well, if I may. This gets back to how we communicate what we're doing to the public, and I've never been a fan that we have done a great job at that. I'll be the first one to say that, I, you know, although, you know, the public notice is adequate and it's legal, I don't think it's good enough for such a project that we're coming up against. I don't know how to make it better, but I think we really need to make it better at many, many levels. So the public has a lot of advance notice of what's going on, not two weeks' notice, which I think is required by law. And we just hammer it at every level possible. So the public has a lot of advance notice of what's going on, and I don't know how better to, you know, get participation than to get this out at every public venue, every chance we can from here on in, saying, you know, "It's coming down the pike, here it is, it's coming, it's whatever," and, you know, the overview, and then however we break it up for all the right reasons. Because we've been a reactive society for certainly as long as I've been here and 20 years before that, and if we can be proactive-
Your point is, well, your point is actually very well taken. That's part of what we're going to be doing, is having the council actually, again, in public session, sort of set forth the kind of calendar. You may not have all the details filled out, but a process, then once that's sort of endorsed, then we use that, you know, get that in the media, you get that through the city news, you get it out in the website, you get that well in advance of the actual meetings occurring, and that's definitely our intent. Back to your kind of, the discussion back and forth about how you want to accept public testimony, another thing for you to think about, and I think it's ultimately, you know, they're going to be your meetings, so you're going to have a lot of latitude in how they're structured and organized, and, you know, part of that drafting a schedule would be with the commission's input overall. But when you start talking about individual topic nights, like, say, there's going to be, you group ones that are logical together, maybe you do air quality and noise and traffic, or maybe that's two nights, maybe it's traffic because it's a big topic. You have to think through, then, if you're going to have a presentation by the consultant that night on traffic, are you going to then expect the public comment that same night? Because theoretically, if someone's listening to a presentation on a very detailed technical topic, they might not be in the position that very night to whip out a bunch of verbal comments or written comments. So you really have to think through, as you play this out, how-
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good point.
I don't think it's possible. I mean, you know, people come before us on very simple topics that we haven't thought about, and they bring very logical perspectives to the fore. And all of a sudden, you know, it's like, "Really? We didn't think about that? That's great." This is very complex. We all know it's deeply complex at 1,000 different levels. So I don't think we can, you know, have a presentation and then expect that even we're going to absorb 10% of it at that moment. We're all going to need to think about, you know, what all that means, and between us, we're all going to have very different perspectives, let alone, you know, all the brilliant minds that might be out there that have other great ideas. So I don't think we can.
So that's, again, something to think through on a schedule, because then it becomes, you don't want to wait till you go through nine informational sessions, probably, because then people will have forgotten, you know, there's a delicate balance, and you're going to have to kind of work through, what is that?
Maybe the possible way may be to break it up, one week your presentation on those four topics, and you can have a separate meeting, and then the following week or week after, you can have the comments for those topics.
Yeah, that might be a good way of doing it.
That way, you give them two weeks to digest what they heard.
And research.
And research.
You know, and we can all research. It's like, you know, if somebody says something to me, I mean, I live here, too, I want to go research it for myself personally, although I'm not going to present it as a planning commissioner, but I can make my comments personally. We're all going to have different thought processes on a whole bunch of different things.
So just for my own edification, can I just follow up and go back a little bit? So for the draft EIR, there's going to be a 45-day minimum period for public comment, and the suggestion, as per the law, is that the commission receives the comments and refrains from commenting as a commission. Then thereafter, all of those comments and the responses to those comments are compiled and then presented as the final EIR, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. And at the final EIR stage, we as the commissioner respond in official capacity, but you're allowed to do that prior to, in an individual capacity, if you really so feel compelled. Okay? So just a hypothetical, if it gets to the final EIR stage, but we've all, for some reason, missed a huge issue, you were saying that the final EIR, that's actually deceptive, the term "final"?
Well, in the sense that it's not final till the city council certifies it, which means that if the commission then has comments on, we should have a different name for it, but the draft EIR, the comments and the responses to comments in Sequo language is referred to as the final EIR, but it's not the final approved EIR. So if the commission then has comments on that set of documents, it still keeps the process going in the sense that the consultant needs to address those comments, and that may result in further changes to the EIR document. Then the whole package goes to the city council with the recommendation from the planning commission, along with the project as a whole. The council can have its own, and that's going to be actually the council's first shot at the EIR. They may look at it the same as you do at that point. They'll have the further information of your own comments on the EIR, and they may decide there are inadequacies and send the whole thing back to the consultant to, you know, for additional studies.
Just start it. At the final EIR stage, there is no public comment. That's the period where the commission deliberates.
Yeah, that's our recommendation, is that the public is given an opportunity, and I can assure you it's going to be more than 45 days.
It's the minimum.
That's what's required by law, so I think we're projecting. Okay, council has already fixed a period for 120, so.
I have a question. It sounds as though we're going to receive this during the holidays, and is that rather fair to the public to try to schedule, start scheduling these during the holiday? Or do you think that that will give everyone a chance to look at it for the first few weeks? I mean, is there a law about, once it's given to you, you have a certain amount of time and you have to start right away? Or can we take into account that we're going to receive it in December?
Law establishes a minimum time, and for a document of this kind, it's going, we already know it's going to be far beyond that, so.
I mean, well, like everything else, we'll use, there's always that judgment of when is appropriate, you know, what's the appropriate lead time. If you're going to have an overview, normally you want to do that pretty early on in the process, because if you're trying to aid people in reading a book of that, you probably want to give them an overview upfront, not wait, you wouldn't want to wait to 60 days into 120-day process to give an overview of a document. In my opinion, you'd want the overview fairly early.
Right.
Then maybe you have a gap before you start getting into the technical, so, you know, that's something that collectively, between the council and the commission, you know, that schedule will be kind of figured out in advance based on kind of an estimated publication date. If it's going to be published December 1st, that's one issue. If it's going to be published December 19th, that's probably a different issue in terms of, well, you're not in a scheduled meeting 10 days after the-
I think.
I always spent my Christmas-
Christmas Eve. No, I know what I'm doing on Christmas Eve. So when do we think we're going to put this 800-page document to even look at? How do you know it's 800? Have you heard that it's 800?
Well, that's the rumor, and it's been flying around for about three years.
I thought it was more like 2,000 pages.
Well, I'll stick with mine for a minute.
Again, I don't really have a fixed date. I mean, the date that's been thrown around is the end of November. Is that subject to change? Absolutely, it's subject to change. And change, I mean, going out, not up.
Not before.
Yeah.
So how long is this document? Do you have any idea?
If you, I honestly haven't counted, I mean, I'm sure it's all page numbered of what I've seen, but, yeah, well, the appendices are quite thick.
It's going to be about this thick.
Talking about all the technical documents, supporting documents could be more like this, and the document would be this, and there's a lot of technical, so, you know, you've got 2,000 pages, if you look at every model run of the traffic study and every noise analysis, yeah, you look at these technical studies, it gets voluminous really quickly.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Oh, good luck with us reading that over the holidays.
I have a-
I mean, honestly.
I have a legal question regarding the discussion among the planning commission outside of this, in the planning, in the open meeting. When the process is going on, would that be out of law to discuss among ourselves outside of this, to see there's certain problems we see in the EIR?
In a word, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've still got the Brown Act, so.
Yeah, I know. That's why I ask you that question, because it can happen, you know, and-
But, you know, I come back to the point that the only thing Sequo really requires is a 45-day public comment period. Anything beyond that is up to, is up to the commission in terms of establishing your own procedures.
Okay.
You can conduct as many meetings as you feel are necessary. You can set things up just as, you know, workshops, so you can have discussion. My recommendation is, you know, once the public's made their comment, that's it, but if you feel that, you know, you still want to get some comment, but I think that's just a bad idea because it's going to drag on forever. The public will have an opportunity to make comments on the project, not only at your level, but also when it gets to the city council. So if they have some concerns about the EIR, they can communicate them to you and to the council if they feel that they still have not been addressed. So the fact that it's not a public hearing does not in any way suggest the lack of opportunities for public participation. It's just, I think it, there's a high risk of your deliberations getting bogged down by members of the public interrupting you and saying, "Well, I had these concerns or that concerns," as shown in my letter that I submitted during the public comment period. So technically, Sequo does not even require a public hearing, but most jurisdictions, you know, do that anyway. But because it's going to take multiple meetings just to go through and discuss it among yourselves, I think, you know, there needs to be a more definitive boundary line between the public period and the commission deliberation than we normally do here, because normally, the public can get up and speak at just about any stage of the process, but I think here that could be counterproductive to your ability to get through the EIR.
May I?
Go ahead.
My concern with what you're saying, and I agree that we need to do a job, but my concern with what you're saying is that, you know, we have this cutoff date where the public, you've got until X date to make your comments, after that, you're out of here for now, is that there may be some discovery that shows up between that cutoff period and when we're supposed to discuss what we've heard, what we think, and then make a recommendation- we think, and then make a recommendation to the city council, that something interesting comes up that changes a lot of things. So I have some serious concerns about how that's handled.
Well, one compromise, and I don't know, we haven't talked to John about it, but you could say to members of the public, if you have a concern of that nature, if you think there's something that really needs to be brought to your attention, then put it in writing. And then that can always be submitted to the commission, and you can deal with it or not at your choice. My concern was not as much to muzzle the public from speaking as to prevent a situation where you can't get on with your meeting because it's being monopolized by public comments. So I think the way to possibly keep the door open for those comments to get to you would be to say, put them in writing. That could be delivered to you before the meeting, and then you can decide whether it's, you want to spend time doing that.
No, that sounds fair to me.
You can adopt those comments and make them your own.
Right.
And they go back to the council. I think they'll have more effectiveness by doing it that way anyway.
Right. No, I mean, that sounds very fair to me. I just felt like suddenly the public was
Yeah.
... refuted from participating.
Well, they're going to feel that way too. And so I think if you tell them that there's kind of this escape valve, that, well, we can't have the meeting devoted to receiving a lot of public comment. If you really want to make a comment, then just put it in writing, and it'll get to us, and then we can decide whether we want to pass it on to the consultant.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Actually, I like this whole process. In the past, we didn't do that way. I remember when we were doing the EIR review for the Kori project and all that, we didn't have this process in place. And I think this is a better process to handle a project of this size. So I think it will be better overall approach. The other thing I like to do is I want to set up a time before this happens to have the whole process as to how we're going to review this, and should we do it in the general public? If we set up an agenda item, or we can meet separately.
What I would actually recommend when we're further along and closer to a publication date is to have the EIR consultant who will be presenting much of the technical information in a public setting and whatnot, to actually come in and be a part of a process where we kind of work through what a reasonable kind of schedule, or how much material a night, and how many meetings it might take. So, you know, you have the input of the person who might actually be presenting the information.
Okay.
It's not the schedule in the abstract or in a vacuum.
Yeah, what I like to do is get the consensus from among all the commissioners as to how we're going to proceed, so that way we all understand the whole process. Okay.
Some of us are on other committees that are concerned with the Baylands. Is that at this point a conflict of interest, once the EIR comes out?
It's not a legal conflict in the sense of, it's usually defined in terms of economic interest, but it is a complication. If you are, for example, expressing opinions on the EIR before another committee or body or commissioner, what have you, I guess I would have the same kind of concerns.
Well, I'm on the BBCAG, so should, what I'm asking is, should I resign from the BBCAG during the EIR process? Or, I'm the secretary, so I take notes. You know, is this something where I should resign until the EIR is finished? Or, that's what I want to know.
I don't know. You have any thoughts on that?
Or maybe there are two kind of, that's one, probably three options. One is you maintain your current status and role. The second would be where you resign. And the third, which is maybe a bit of a mid-ground, is you not, you abstain from any sort of recommendations on the EIR. I guess that would be maybe the middle, I'd ask that to Hal, if that's an acceptable middle ground. If you're sitting there kind of listening to their discussion and debate, and, you know, they're, as a group, are trying to make a recommendation, but you don't vote on that, you don't necessarily be in on saying, that's a great idea, that's a bad idea, I don't know, that's a middle ground in my mind.
My preference is the middle ground, and for a number of reasons. You may be sitting there as an observer, but you're still absorbing information, which then can be brought back to the commission if you wish. The other thing is that by abstaining from the action, you're also consistent with the idea that you're not acting. Because you may be there in a representative capacity as a member of the planning commission, some of these groups, I don't know if that's one of them or not.
I don't think so.
But --
It's the public.
Yeah.
Could be wrong.
I think you probably fill a niche of governmental, at least planning commissioners are always identified as such on DTSC's roster.
Oh, okay. So if I was there just doing the minutes, abstaining, that would work?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to know.
Okay, anything else, Hal?
That's it on my end. If anyone has any other questions.
Any other questions for the --
I have no questions.
It's going to be a daunting task, so I wish you all good luck with it.
Aren't you lucky that we let you go before midnight?
This may end up being the exception to your future meeting, is that enough?
If I might just make one more comment. Just, from my perspective, I'm hearing from you some constraints on the public, and I never want to do that, being the ultimate democratic person who wants people to have free speech at all times. So that makes me a little nervous that we're muzzling the public at any level. However, I do understand that we have to be able to have discussion to move forward or not. So I'm still a little nervous about how we go about, and I'm going to say it again, muzzling the public, because I don't like to muzzle the public, and I'm the public, and I don't like having a muzzle on at any time. So I do have some concerns about that. If we can make that palatable in any way, shape, or form, then that's great. But if I come to a meeting and I'm told I can't speak, trust me, I'm going to stand at the back of the meeting and I'm going to speak anyway. So not so comfortable with that idea.
No, and I think we fully appreciate that concern, and I probably shouldn't use the word muzzle either, and neither should the rest of us. But the fact of the matter is, it's going to become a judgment call by the commission. It's a recommendation on our part to try to give you the time within the framework of a meeting to conduct whatever, you know, discussion among yourselves you want to do. But again, Sequo does not dictate any particular process, and it's up to the commission to determine, you know, what you want to do. But, you know, we think it, once the public comment period is closed, it's not at all uncustomary in other jurisdictions, for example, to say, all right, here's this period of time in which to comment, it's not kept open forever. So by making that recommendation, I think we're being consistent with Sequo practice in terms of review of an EIR, which is a different kind of document and procedure than you're normally used to dealing with as a land use approval or application. Because there's a definite time for a public comment, then there's a time for public agency deliberation, and then final action. And so, you know, I don't think anyone can say you're violating Sequo by saying the public comment period is closed. By allowing people to speak during your own deliberations, you're actually making the exception. Whether that helps or hurts, I don't know. But I agree, in this community, it's a difficult thing to tell people, but it's, you know.
I'm just not comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, last chance? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now you can go home and relax.
Thanks, Hal.
Enjoy your retirement.
Something tells me.
Maybe not.
You can leave me for a while, anyway.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, is there anything from the staff you want to contribute tonight?
I don't have anything.
What's the status of that problem we had with the, behind Karen's house, there was some --
Illegal, the grading.
Illegal.
That is being, it's been referred to Fish and Wildlife Service. Actually, Ken, you want to go ahead? You have more familiar with the details.
Yeah, Fish and Wildlife is currently looking at it and what kind of action to take on the owner as a result of the grading that was done up there. It was part of a geotechnical investigation that was done without permits. And also, they have, the city engineer as well as county and Fish and Wildlife has indicated that the owner needs to take out a site activity review application immediately to get up there and do erosion control with a biologist that would be onsite at the time to make sure that there's no further damage during that work, because with the rainy season upon us, we don't want further damage from --
Would that be coming to the planning commission or not?
No, this would not.
So when this will be done? Because the rainy season starts middle of October 15th.
Yeah, I don't have a date. The edict from the city engineer as well as for Fish and Wildlife is immediately. If, I would imagine that if they do not act in a timely manner, and there's more damage as a result, that there may be further fines for not acting quickly. I don't know what the actual result is.
The slopes that they created, are they stable? Did anybody do any study to make sure that there won't be any landslide or anything?
Yeah, actually, the city engineer, the city has another on-call geotechnical consultant, and he went out there, again, it's part of the issue of landslide, you know, the area is subject to slide as it is. There's a judgment of the geotechnical engineer, the city's consulting geotechnical, that the depth of the disruption wasn't going to cause a landslide risk. So that's the, so yes, the city did hire, have someone go out there, look at it.
Is there cotton and associate?
Pardon?
Is that the cotton and associates of?
Yeah, Toots, yeah. Cotton Shires and --
Cotton Shire and Associates, okay. And there is no chance of getting any of that material on surrounding properties, huh?
Certainly, that's the whole reason to get the erosion control and implemented ASAP, because clearly there's going to be a risk of sedimentation and runoff and erosion in its current condition. So they're going to have to comply with any sort of storm drain controls as well, since there's engineering, public work requirement as part of the remedial permit.
Now, this brings up the point that for the geotechnical investigations, a lot of cities, including Brisbane, I think don't require any kind of a permit. They can go ahead and do the boring and do the preliminary investigation. As a result of this, are you going to change your general practice and define the projects that they can do without the permit, but projects of that nature where they are to do the massive, you know, digging and --
There's a --
Are you going to change that to your plans?
Because I understand that that's not necessarily just a city, I think it's in the state code, as I understand it, in terms of theoretically, that's what the geotechnical engineer who started the work was relying on a provision of state code, as I understood it, exempted him from these requirements. You know, what it gets down to is the city engineer has a difference of opinion, and the city's opinion will always rule over a private developer, private engineers, and he, you go to the state board, I guess, in terms of licensing, if you really wanted to push the issue. But the shorter answer, maybe another answer, is that, and Hal, it's good that you're still here, the city is looking at updating its grading ordinance comprehensively, and I believe that that was one of the issues that was going to be addressed of disturbance in sensitive habitat areas like the acres, even for activities that would otherwise theoretically be exempted.
Yeah, I think there should be some language in the grading ordinance, because we have the unique situation here. We don't even, not only have the problems with the areas that are prone to landslide, but also very sensitive habitat there. So there should be some language in our ordinance to require them to have the prior, you know, the permit to go ahead and do that kind of work.
We've completed a draft, a redraft of the entire grading ordinance, grading chapter. It was reviewed by Mountain Watch, which had a couple comments on it, and it's at this stage now where I'm going to incorporate those comments, and we're pretty much done and ready to take to the city council. There is, as I recall, some specific language in there about grading within the HCP area. And again, I haven't looked at the legalities here, but it seems to me that once you're in the HCP, regardless of grading, the HCP is under federal jurisdiction. And even if they're allowed to go in there without a grading ordinance, they still would have to satisfy HCP requirements. And what those are is not entirely clear here, but at a minimum, a site activity permit or something of that nature. So you can't claim an exemption from grading and then just go in there and run havoc in the habitat, which is under federal jurisdiction rather than city jurisdiction. And anyway, that's, but as far as the grading ordinance is concerned, that will be specifically addressed in the new ordinance.
We've had the opportunity to review this. Normally, these kind of ordinance do come before the planning commission for review also.
I'm not sure on the grading, because that's a building regulation, and normally would not, but I, but we might run it by the commission just to get your review and comment on it in any case, even though it's not normally a part of the legal process.
There will be a couple minor changes to the zoning code where they're referenced, so that part of the amendment would come before the commission.
Okay. Any other questions you have for the staff? Anything from the commission?
No, no comment.
Nothing. Okay, so we broke the record today, it's only 8:30 and we finished.
We could stay a bit longer.
Well, Hal wants to go home and sleep, you know? He's retired.
He already is.
He's past his sleeping time. Anyway, thank you very much, Hal, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate that. And who wants to make the --
I don't have the agenda. Yeah, I don't have the agenda either.
Agenda is right here, the last item, adjournment.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to do subcommittee updates at all, if there's anything to --
Subcommittee update, anyone?
That would be Commissioner Reinhardt.
Commissioner Reinhardt is not here, so.
Is Commissioner?
Commissioner Cunningham?
Um.
This agenda, yeah.
Yeah, there's the commission, yeah, there's the committee.
Some committee updates.
Can we leave that for Commissioner Reinhardt? I don't think we made that much progress that I need to make a comment on that, honestly. We really didn't.
Okay, so we are to the last item now. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of October 25th, 2012.
Okay, we have a motion, and?
I'll second that.
You have a second, please, the, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, I had to use the correct word, I'm so scared, because I've been making mistakes, and so moved.